Okay, I see it's six o'clock. We'll go ahead and get started. This is the March 6th City Council Special Meeting. Mr. Hill, if you would, call the roll for me, please.
Mr. Severance.
Here.
Mr. Ruckman.
Here.
Mrs. Woods.
Here.
Mrs. Seville.
Here.
Ms. Keener. Mr. Mahan.
Here.
Mr. Miller.
Here.
We have one thing on the agenda tonight, and that is a public hearing. And, Mr. Severance, this falls under your committee, so I will turn this over to you.
Okay.
Oh, can I get a motion to excuse Amber Keener?
Don't move.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
I was gonna say, do we need to excuse Bruce? Okay, he's excused.
Okay. All right, welcome to this special meeting. I want to just read this statement before we get going. Glad you're all here, it's a good crowd. So, welcome this evening for this Streets Committee. As a reminder to all here today, the purpose of this meeting is to listen to the public's concerns regarding the matter of the Edgewood Road improvements. Council will not be deciding on anything this evening, nor will the legislation related to the Edgewood Road improvements receive an official reading tonight. Rather, this is one of your chances, as a citizen, to voice your concerns, opposition to, or support for, the proposed project. If you do not wish to speak, you may still provide a letter to the city and email it directly to us, one of us on council, or to the clerk of council, and that email address is clerkofcouncil@mountvernonohio.org, which would also be on the city website. Any letters that are provided will become a part of the official record for comments. So, this is a public meeting, and there are some rules of decorum we follow. First, we are committed to the democratic process, individual rights of expression, robust debate, and tolerance for different viewpoints. Secondly, the following general rules of civility are expected, including addressing others in a respectful manner, no insulting, personal attacks, intimidating, or offensive communications, no harassment, no willful destruction or damage of property, and no disruptive behavior. So, please silence all your cellphones, if you would at this time, or any other devices, and try to refrain from any private conversations during the meeting, so that we can hear everybody. If you need to come and go throughout the meeting, please do so in the least disruptive manner possible. If you are offering public comment today, you must first identify yourself and where you live, so give us your name and address, and then you will receive, you'll get four minutes to speak, okay? Again, this purpose, the purpose of this meeting is to give the public the chance to speak regarding the Edgewood Road Improvement Project. So, I think what we'll do is, how many, just trying to get an idea, how many are wanting to speak publicly tonight? One, two, or it looks like eight or ten-ish, so we should have plenty of time to do that. I think what we'll do is, we'll just start on this section over here to my left, and go back that section, and then we'll come up to the front of this section and go back, okay? So, gentlemen, sir, I think you were the first one. If you will, again, just get up and give us your name and your address, and we will give you four minutes to speak.
And if you don't mind, Amel, I'm gonna be the keeper of the time. I'll let you know when the four minutes is up, finish that sentence, and then if we have time at the end, we'll have people come back up and finish the thought. Thank you.
I'm James R. Stalard, husband of Joan B. Stalard, trustee, owner of 202 South Edgewood Road, where we have resided for forty-nine years. The property is served underground by Columbia Gas, AEP Ohio, Bright Speed, and the public sewer. I want to make three points about Resolution 2024-23. The resolution concerns an agreement. The purpose of the agreement is the widening of Edgewood Road from Gambier Road to Coshockton Road. This has been a controversial matter for more than forty-five years, as residents have strongly objected to constant destruction of their quality of life by an ever-increasing flood of traffic. No one doubts that the implementation of the agreement will increase the flood of traffic still more. The information provided by the city administration on March the first about altering Edgewood Road is inadequate to the point of being an elitist insult. More effort to hide than to inform. At a minimum, we residents need complete information about implementation of the agreement, so we can judge how our properties might be affected, and how negatively the increase of through-traffic will affect our property values and quality of life. On June the eighth, eighteen, nineteen ninety, the city levied a fifty-dollar fee to receive a petition, requesting relief from the negative impacts on our neighborhood from poor planning and ever-increasing traffic through our R1 residential neighborhood. Our petition had four hundred and thirty-nine valid signatures. Everyone who ever had a civics lesson knew then and knows now that Amendment One of the Bill of Rights allows for the free petition of government for re-tryst of grievances. Nevertheless, it took a visit from the American Civil Liberties Union before the city refunded our money and considered our petition. Unfortunately, the city continued to fail in planning for the impacts of development it didn't just allow, but heedlessly fostered on Coshockton Road, Yager Road, and Upper Gilcrest Road. The city routinely adopts legislation, including the phrase "and declaring an emergency." Resolution 2024-23 has that phrase. The Ohio Revised Code at 731.30 provides that declaring an emergency removes the possibility otherwise allowed by ORC 731.29 for signatures to be collected to place the matter on the ballot at the next general election. Declaring an emergency is for actual matters that must be attended to at the moment. All matters before City Council cannot be emergencies. My neighbor, Don Carr, who could not be here tonight, drew the phrase to council's attention and detailed the fact that of, that as of last November, all of the forty ordinances and eighty-seven resolutions enacted by council in 2023 had included the phrase, and that all of the forty-nine ordinances and one hundred and thirty-seven, thirty-three resolutions enacted in twenty-two, twenty-two contained the phrase.
And, sir, that's, that's four minutes. Can I ask you to save your remainder for the end, and we'll call you back up?
Pardon?
That's four minutes.
Please allow me to finish. I've already handed this out. It is an abuse of the law to use "and declaring an emergency" on every piece of legislation, because the phrase preemptively prohibits voters from exercising the specific right of ultimate oversight of council that is reserved to the public in ORC 731.29. By using the phrase routinely, council, whether intentionally or otherwise, disenfranchises voters. Consequently, if Resolution 2024-23 comes to a vote, it should be amended to remove the phrase "and declaring an emergency." Likewise, the phrase should hereafter be confined to resolutions addressing actual emergency situations, examples of which appear in ORC 731.30. Declaring an emergency routinely should cease.
Okay.
And it should not escape notice that the American Civil Liberties Union is now and has always been very interested in voter disenfranchising.
Thank you.
Okay, we are gonna stick to the four-minute limit, and if you want to get up and finish your comments at the end, if there is time, we will do that, okay?
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Stalard.
Again, we're just, we're gonna do four minutes, and if they, you will finish that sentence, and then we'll let everybody else have four minutes, and then you can finish at the end. That way, we'll make sure everybody has adequate time.
Okay, who is next in this section? Joe.
My name is Joe Noonan. I, along with my wife, own and reside at 207 South Edgewood Road. Members of our family have lived in this home for over a hundred years. We also have the auspicious occasion to be located in pleasant township Fleeville. And as such, I have a couple of questions and then a final comment. The question is, has council taken into consideration the unique laws relative to road width of townships, as recorded by the Ohio Department of Transportation, and all processes therein encumbered? And as such, one of those requirements is spelled out in "requirements to notify property owners." And I have sent this in an email to Mr. Severance and the city engineer, not knowing how this evening would unfold. And finally, I just would like to place, not a hundred-year context, but tonight, my wife is emotionally moved in a way that I've not seen her after forty-three years of marriage, because of everything that's being said, because no one truly owns a singular narrative. We're gonna lose our house. Our llamas and alpacas will have to go. And so, I stand before you, not emotionally distraught, but suffering PTSD, because in nineteen sixty-eight, when the high school went in, there was no bridge. There was no colonial hills, the road ended at Park Avenue by the Kirch Farm, and Edgewood Road at some point was dirt. I had friends whose family were prominent in the community, politically involved in the, in the state, and I also had friends on city council. I want you to know that I hope that history does not repeat itself, because in the annals of your minutes of city council, in the, in the records of the Mount Vernon News, is the reality that, try as city council might, to look at the unintended consequences of building a bridge, they were told, it's going to happen, and there's nothing you can do about it. I've heard those comments. I've heard that there are individuals with vested interests beyond the infrastructure, which does need attention. And I am just here to ask council's question. Will you, fourscore and seven years from now, be known as those who capitulated to an agenda and did not give due process, exposing documents that have been submitted, surveys that have been done, and all of the data that informs the decisions that you are about to make? Because I think most of us, as reasonable people, appreciate your service, and in the context of that, would appreciate the opportunity to see the manner in which you make your decisions, so that we can be educated in responding to them, and not be told, this is just going to happen, because there are those socially and politically connected that want it to happen, and they will make certain the funding is there, and they will make sure the project is going through. I respectfully thank you for your service, and I yield the remainder of my time to the cogent speaking gentleman.
All right, who's next, back here?
Before I start, unfortunately, I was...
Please state your name and address.
Dennis Swingle, eleven oh one East Chestnut Street. Lived there for, since nineteen seventy-eight, and I've watched five decades, almost, of Edgewood Road. Before I open, I'm going to pick up the second half, because I have a number of pictures, and unfortunately, I couldn't provide my flash drive, so the public's not gonna be able to see the presentation that I wanted to make, but I'll pick up the pictures on the second half. The proposed alteration of Edgewood Road will have major impacts on the residents who live on Edgewood Road and on the streets connecting to it. In fact, there is no possibility it will not have major impacts on the entire R1 neighborhood. The information provided by the city administration so far on the proposed alteration of Edgewood Road is insufficient. No part of it is sufficient to allow the residents to even understand how much property will be taken, much less the impact of the quality of life on the entire neighborhood. The pitiful information released so far seems designed to hide more than to explain or convince. This is a guaranteed way to inflame the public. As a capital planning facilities engineer, I have thirty-two years of experience doing multimillion-dollar projects. All of that work involved engineering plans and drawings from the initial stages to completion of the project. From that experience, I find it impossible to believe that the city was able to obtain six hundred and eighty thousand dollars from CORPO, as well as two million dollars from the Ohio Department of Transportation, with nothing more than extremely poor representation of an explanation as to the layout plan for Phase One of the Edgewood Road project. Additionally, now you're asking council to approve Resolution 24, 2024-23, seeking another three-point-one million dollars, with nothing more than what you provided in the Edgewood Phase One SOW document. That's five-point-eight million dollars with no details. So, I ask, where are the plans that had to be submitted to get the money? If council has seen them, why can't they be made public now? If council has not seen them, it should reject 2024-23 until it and the public has seen and had the opportunity to review and comment on them. Before city council considers moving Resolution 2024-23 forward, I believe the public and the city council deserve a good deal more information, and especially significantly better interpretation of exactly how Edgewood Road and the affected streets and driveways might look if the proposed alteration is implemented. By the way, Mr. Mayor, when you lived across from me on East Chestnut Street, you told me on numerous occasions that widening Edgewood Road and putting it through to Coshockton Avenue was the worst thing the city could do. You stood on your front porch with a sound meter and measured the noise of the traffic going up and down Chestnut Street, and said the city needed to do something about all the noise and traffic in the residential area. Once you moved away and became a member of city council, your opinion totally changed. The neighborhood is still R1. Nothing about the neighborhood has changed, but you have. Thank you.
I'm Tammy Swingle, and I live at eleven oh one East Chestnut Street. At the last city council meeting, I spoke on the history of Edgewood Road. Tonight, I'm going to ask you to think about the future. Looking at extending Edgewood Road logically, not only will traffic problems increase on Edgewood, but it will add to the congestion on Coshockton Avenue, starting at the western end and extending the length of the shopping area. People moving into the new housing developments east of town will have to battle the traffic daily with all of the stop-and-go traffic. Families along Edgewood Road will lose their homes. Let's face facts, houses will not be moved, as Mr. Ball has stated. They will be condemned and demolished. Is someone going to look these families in the eye and tell them they're losing their homes, or will cold, emotionless form letters be mailed to them once the plan is approved? What do you want your legacy to be? Remembered for putting Edgewood through to Coshockton Avenue, which didn't solve anything, and destroyed the homes of several families and only added to the congestion on Coshockton? Or remembered for creating the much-needed eastern bypass, which solved the congestion on Coshockton Avenue, helped retail businesses on Coshockton, and provided access to the housing developments planned east of Mount Vernon? I hope those of you voting to go ahead with this project stop a minute to remember the families you are hurting with your vote. The article that appeared February twenty-ninth on Knox Pages pertaining to the February twenty-sixth city council meeting and Edgewood Road had a linked article which quoted Mr. Saliers on August twenty-fourth, twenty-twenty-three, on the scope of the Edgewood Road project. Mr. Saliers makes it sound like most of the project is benign, just routine maintenance, improvements any resident would wish for. He says only limited right-of-way will be needed, while Mr. Ball, in another article linked to this one, says there will be just, just be a shift to align one section of Edgewood to another. I see these statements as an attempt to put blinders on the area residents. Having lived here forty-six years, it's too late to try to fool me. I've already seen and heard too much. None of the stories we hear regarding the project line up. No one will give us one detail. After asking repeatedly, my husband was sent an aerial view of Edgewood Road with squiggly lines drawn freehand up one side and down the other along the Phase One portion of Edgewood. It wasn't to scale, not one number was written on it to tell us anything about what the lines represented or what is planned. I could've done a better job using a pencil and a ruler. We have better maps at home, including one showing the current right-of-way. He also received a sheet listing items included in the scope of work, which was handed out tonight. Not one detail was included, no information we didn't already have. I strongly suspect council members haven't been given any more information than we have. I urge council members not to pass something for which they have no details. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Greg Chioders, I live at Seven Merida Drive. Wasn't really expecting to come up here, but now I feel that I should.
What was your name again, sir?
Greg Chioders.
Chioders?
Chioders, C-H-I-O-D-R-S, yes. Actually, I'm a transplant from Columbus, moved here in twenty-seventeen, and now consider Mount Vernon my home. I still work in Columbus, and it's just a relaxing blessing to be back in a small town after working hard all day in Columbus. I guess, I didn't know much about this project until I got this formless letter someone else made mention to. I guess I have one question and one comment, and that is, what type of traffic surveys, amount of traffic coming down Edgewood as it is now, or across Merida to go further up Coshockton? I never really saw any sensors in the road, you know, the cords that go across that count traffic, never saw any of that, so I'm kinda curious how or, or what parameters led to we've gotta, you know, extend it because of traffic concerns. And I guess my comment is, one of the kind of quaint things I loved about the neighborhood is, it doesn't have sidewalks. It's not that traditional subdivision feel. I mean, our yard goes all the way to the road, and, you know, we, we drive on the road like anyone else, and if there's someone walking in the road, you yell to them, you don't need a sidewalk. It's, I just, I don't, to me, it's, it takes away from that small-town feel. So, thank you for your time.
All right, next.
With your permission, I am working diligently to try and get this down to four minutes.
Okay. Go to the next person back there.
If you want to just pass me a moment, I'd appreciate it.
Yeah, that's fine, absolutely. Who's next, back there?
Hello, I'm Rick Hall from one oh one Merida Drive, right there at the Edgewood, Merida Drive, right there. I'm sure I won't be as eloquent as prior speakers, but I'll do the best I can, okay? I just wanna say that I really liked living where I live. It's really nice. I like the people. It's got some traffic, as it is, I mean, I, sometimes I gotta sit in the driveway and I gotta wait a while to get out, but that's okay. Usually, they come up and they stop and they wait to see, am I gonna back out, or they gonna go forward? But it's all pretty nice, it's pretty pleasant. And I guess the thing that I would say about it is, I understand the Phase One, and sure, nice roads would be beautiful, and I know you have to move gas lines, and people need that, they need the services, so whatever that is, as far as sidewalks, I'm out of that one, that's up to everybody else, okay? So, I don't think it'll be on mine anyway, so who knows? But what really kinda concerns me is if, if, once, is the Phase Two, once it's connected to Route Thirty-Six, Coshockton Avenue, if there's gonna be signs all over town that says, "To Coshockton Avenue, to Route Thirty, to State Route Thirty-Six, turn here." Now, as it is, we have quite a bit of traffic there right now, but if there's signs on the other side of town that says, you know, "to connect to Route Thirty-Six," or "Coshockton Ave," then I think that would probably quadruple the traffic. Now, I could maybe live with that, but the issue for me would be, I think that a lot of trucks and semi-traffic is probably gonna take that route. Now, maybe the sign may say "no trucks," but you gotta remember, we have a lot of people driving semis today that don't speak English, or not so well. And they all have GPSs which tell them which way to go. You can ask any of the receivers or anybody, and they'll tell you. They have a lot of people coming, delivering products to them that they can't speak to. So, I would, and we do get some semis down there now. Not many, not so much, and I put some big boulders out the end of my driveway, 'cause they're busting up all the concrete, but they don't get on it much. So, my fear is, that's what would happen. Now, do I know that? You know, I don't know, but that's, that's pretty much all I have to say, so, thank you.
Stan Wood, ten eleven East Chestnut Street, and I have some questions about the information that we've been given, and I can say, on a personal note, obviously, my family, my wife and I and family are wondering, if this project gets to Phase Two, what will the impact be exactly on, on our own property, on our own home, and our lives? Obviously, we're quite vitally interested in that. Some questions I have, as I've read Saliers' single-page commentary to us, I saw twice the, the expression "traffic congestion," and we've already heard some comments about that. We live on the corner of Edgewood and, and Chestnut, and so we hear some very interesting sounds there, and I have some interesting times backing out of the driveway, obviously. And we keep an eye on some schoolchildren. Thankfully, the bus and people are respectful of the bus putting out the stoplights, but we watch the schoolchildren crossing Edgewood to get to and from the bus into their homes. But pardon my question about traffic congestion, is, is there a certain point in that stream from two twenty-nine onward that we're talking about? And then, as someone was just mentioning, if we get onto Phase Two, if we get onto Phase Two and we would be thinking about opening up to Coshockton, what would happen there? Would there be another light? Would we have three lights right in a row at that point? What would happen at Merida and Edgewood? Would it be a four-way stop? What would happen at that intersection? We already are familiar with the, the stop signs along the way from High Street all the way to Merida, and the interesting times that we see in the summer, especially when some people try to see how, how quickly they can get from zero to sixty, or something, from stop sign to stop sign. But anyway, what, what are we talking about in traffic congestion, and, and how would that, how would that help us? would that help us? I have some perhaps very simple questions, then, when we talk about expanding the roadway exactly, the roadway itself, exactly how much will it be widened, the part that the vehicles actually travel on? How much would that be widened? Were the sidewalks that are in the proposal part of the original grant and therefore requirement? I'm not for or against them, I'm just asking. And I mentioned the intersection. Also, in the one-page commentary that we had, was talked about the infrastructure kinds of things that need to be done, waterline, storm drain, and so on. I want to know if, for some reason, for some unknown reason, the project were not to go forward, would those infrastructure needs be addressed, still be addressed? And then I think a question that all of us have to a certain point is, I think I'm reading something like an estimate for Phase 1 of $5 million, and that we possibly have about half of that, and the big question is in our minds is, where will the rest of that come from? There's a phrase in this commentary, "The remaining costs will come from numerous funds within Mount Vernon's budget," and it'd be interesting to see how that might work out. So there are just questions that I have about where we are, the status of the proposal as it's been given to us, and to feel as if I know, as some others have said, really where we are and what we are voting on. Thank you.
I also wasn't planning to speak. I also commute from Columbus, but I wanted to write something down and have my voice heard. My name's Sterling Hamilton. I reside at 944 East High Street. My wife and I both decided to come in here because we're kind of concerned about what we've been hearing about, so just wanted to make our voices heard. We've resided at our residence since 2019 and have worked to make this a safe inviting home for both us and our four children. We moved to Mount Vernon from Columbus because we fell in love with this house, but over time, we've come to love the history, the kind people, and the overall environment of this whole city. While I don't think this was the intention, the reality is that this proposal will most likely chase us out of the home in the city that we've fallen in love with. I appreciate the council's willingness to hear our concerns, and what, based on what I've heard tonight, I'm hearing a lot of anxiety based off of a lack of information that may not be intentional, but it does seem to be holding a lot of the residents' lives hostage. I strongly support the city's responsibility to maintain streets and sewers, but this project will be exceedingly disruptive and will lower the quality of life for this historic and amazing area. I strongly urge the council to reconsider this project, or at the very least, provide the same level of openness they would expect from others. Thank you.
Anybody else in that section? Mike?
Michael P. Hillier, 215 East Sugar. Born and raised in Mount Vernon. 65 years ago, started. This gentleman right here, used to walk to our house, play football. That's how, well, I know Edgewood Road. I used to walk to Edgewood Road to mow grass. So this isn't just something I just thought I need to mention a few words. I think people sitting here know how I felt about this project and the conversation, so there shouldn't be anything new. Ironically, some of these things you don't bring up, you've already heard, but it's how I felt. Number one, I find it hard to believe that when we're told that we're gonna get something about the project, it'd be a picture taken off the auditor's website. This is what was the first thing that went out. I guess that's all there is. I'm shocked that we got the grant. On page one of the resolution, it says, "In declaring an emergency." My question is, can anybody explain to me how this has to be passed as an emergency legislation? Unless you don't want to give any time for response from residents after it's been passed, similar to what you've already heard. I imagine one of the answers you're probably gonna hear is we have deadlines, timelines, gotta get it done, we don't have time, can't wait 30 days, should've started sooner. On page one, it also says, "Widening of Edgewood Road from US 229 to US 36." Regardless of what you might have heard before tonight or tonight, we're talking about Phase 1? We're only doing Phase 1? The legislation that passed is to make Edgewood Road open clear through to Cuschocton Avenue. It doesn't say only we're just talking about Phase 1 first. Right below that, in the legislation, it uses the word "multimodal." I sent council an email about this. I didn't know what that word meant, and my wife pointed it out. By definition, this allows, one of the things it allows is truck traffic. I think most of you have had calls before about truck traffic. Well, I think you might get more of it, especially if it's part of the legislation. If it doesn't have to be in there, get it out of there. Mr. Salyers, the information he sent out, it says, "Limited property acquisition may be required." To me, that sounds like eminent domain. It's a word that's not used up here often. By definition, eminent domain gives government the power to take the property even if the owner does not want to sell it. This has not always worked well for the city of Mount Vernon in the past. I can give you a couple of names, you want to talk to the guy that made a bunch of money on eminent domain. Bottom of the same page, "Anticipated timeline designed for Phase 1 and 2 to begin in early spring." I believe that was next year. Again, to the vote is passed legislation, you'll have to approve it through Cuschocton There's, in an email I sent to you, there are things that can be done, that needs done. Waterline needs replaced, sewer lines need replaced. There's, if there's room for curbs and gutter, room for curbs and gutter, storm sewer, whatever it is. I imagine the reason there has to be a sidewalk is because of grant money. I know there's no answer that's gonna be given tonight, but that's one that can be answered. Does it have to have a sidewalk? That would eliminate some of the problems. Not everywhere in town has to, can't always have a sidewalk, even though we have written legislation that any new developments have sidewalks, and we're fighting that right now with one on Cuschocton Avenue. In my closing, if this goes through in the manner, you can, in this manner, you can kiss property value of some of the nicer homes in Mount Vernon goodbye. Not just the homes on Edgewood Road, but the ones that are running nearby, Chestnut Street, and some of the others. If you don't believe me, look what traffic has done to the homes, some of the homes on Cuschocton Avenue, and some of the homes on Sandusky Street, and we're working every day to how we can improve those two areas. I remember, I'm good. I remember back when it looked much better. Thank you for your time.
Anybody else in that? My left. Okay, move over here to the right and front.
Hi, everybody. Zach Thurman. 6 South Edgewood is where we're gonna move. We're working on the house. Not there yet, we're still on 934 East High. So, I'm one of the family doctors here in town, and we moved to Mount Vernon because it's a small town, right? My wife's twin sister lives down the street from us, it's kind of idyllic. I don't know a lot about city government. I don't know very much about this project, and I'm gonna trust that you guys are doing your job like I do my job, so I'm not gonna tell you how to do it, but as a dad, actually, is how I'm talking about this. It's like, I wanna raise my boys in a place that feels safe. I've got four sons, and they're gonna roll down the hill to East School. Not really. We'll walk with them. But, you know, I think about more traffic makes that a little more difficult, you know? We're right at the top of Vine Street, and so what does it look like for a six-year-old little boy to cross the road? Probably with us, right? But, you know, boys are boys. So I think about that, and I just want to make sure that safety is part of this conversation, that, you know, I have no idea how wide the road is gonna be. Are there gonna be multiple lanes? Is there gonna be truck traffic? You know, I think that changes things. The other, the other interesting thing is just like hearing the history and hearing a lot of emotion. People have lived there a lot longer than me, and this neighborhood seems like it means something to a lot of people. And I know that that's always the battle, you know, to think about history and families and people's story, but also, what does that look like when we mix it with progress? So I appreciate you giving me the chance to speak, and just know that, yeah, people love this neighborhood, and we're hoping that it's a great neighborhood, you know, putting some time and money into the house, and hopefully that'll be a place that we can stay for a long time. So, good to meet all of you. I haven't met you in person, but appreciate the work that you're doing. Thanks.
Good evening. My name is Alvin Murray. I live at 105 Edgewood, North Edgewood. According to NHTSA, National Highway Traffic Safety Administration, in 2021, out of all the children that died in the traffic there, well, that's why I can't see it, that died under the age of 14 and younger in traffic-related accidents, 16% were killed while walking, running, playing, or laying down along the road. Another 3% were pedaling bikes, of which 68% of those were wearing helmets. 78% of those that were struck, they were struck by the front of the vehicle. The only thing on Edgewood that we have to slow traffic down are the stop signs. When you take out the stop signs, they will travel at 40 to 50 miles per hour like we do on South Edgewood. Well, how do I know that? Because I follow traffic, and I'm one of them people. Hope the cops not in here. In the zoning code, Chapter 1101B, it states, "The purpose is to encourage orderly, efficient, and appropriate growth and development." In Chapter 1101C, it states that they're trying to encourage proper use of land to stabilize and preserve property value and to protect against unsafe traffic conditions. By pushing this through, you're encouraging unsafe traffic conditions. I would also like to say that I have called both Ball and Salyers' office, and I have yet to have a call back. And I just did that, that was spur of the moment here, because I just found out about this. When talking with Mr. Swingle, he also has told me he does not get calls back on a timely matter. Our property values are going down if this goes through, our kids' lives are at stake, and I feel you guys are playing games. That's what it looks like to me. I would like to think our goal would be to alleviate traffic congestion on Cuschocton from McDonald's to O'Reilly Auto Parts, four lanes to two lanes. This option will increase that congestion, dumping them off just before all that. I have seen plans like the Upper Gilcrest Road ideas that is still a viable option. That plan will reduce traffic from Walmart to downtown on Cuschocton, maintain our property values, and keep our children safe. I ask you to consider other options. There are 11 children that live in and within 150 feet of my house. Thank you very much for hearing.
Anyone else over here?
My name's Jennifer Showman. I live at 200 North Edgewood. I'm gonna apologize in advance, because after watching the last council minutes, I didn't realize we were gonna be timed, so I'm gonna need a callback. But I wanted to express my concerns for the proposed Edgewood Road improvements project. While I understand that currently only Phase 1 is under review, it's still part of a larger project. One of the main goals for this larger project is connecting North Edgewood Road to Cuschocton Avenue. While your proposal states that your goal here is to comprehensively address traffic congestion, particularly in residential neighborhoods, your plan effectively is redirecting high traffic into our residential neighborhood. Clearly, you can see why we don't see this as a helpful solution. Your proposal would also, in theory, mean connecting Edgewood Boulevard to North Edgewood. This means you're just moving and increasing the congestion from one bad intersection at Varnandale down about 1,000 feet to, on Cuschocton Avenue. You would also, in theory, probably be putting a stoplight at the end of Edgewood, which is 500 feet within Highland Drive, potentially further backing up traffic. Given this, it doesn't seem like this is the best way to address traffic congestion. While the council has appealed for public involvement and participation, the council has not been forthcoming with the actual details that matter when creating this plan. You can tell us how many millions this project is going to cost, but you can't even give us a detailed map with proposed changes. None of the documents that I've seen so far states exactly how much additional land is needed to complete this project. Even if the land is considered right-of-way property, it can still adversely affect the property owners and his vital information. The plan states that it includes limited property acquisition, but no details are given for what properties are impacted by this. Are the properties on the north side of Edgewood also included in this limited property acquisition? If Phase 2 follows the same path as Phase 1, the property at 943 East High Street would appear to be on, in the way of these plans as the actual home falls on the right-of-way line. Has anyone reached out to these people, or is it just being ignored for now so that Phase 1 can be successfully passed? I can also see evidence that suggests the grant money to widen Edgewood was first approved as far back as August 2023, yet the public portion of this proposal was only recently made public, and quite frankly, the added map left much to be desired. How can you support a proposal you can't see the actual details to? How wide is the road? How far are the sidewalks gonna be from homes? What do modern curb, gutter, and catch basins look like, and where are they on these properties? Without these details, I'm not sure how you can expect support from members of the neighborhoods most directly affected, let alone for council approval. ODOT has referred to this project as Widening Edgewood Road, but Mr. Ball has been quoted as saying, "The road is not really getting wider." While I do not see widening the road listed as the project details for Phase 1, I also cannot find documentation that includes any details about the road width and location, let alone that information in comparison to what currently exists. Given Mr. Ball's reluctance to provide actual concrete details for this plan, is this something that we can trust as fact? If, in fact, the plans do include widening the road, does this mean that you'll start allowing trucks through High Street to turn on Edgewood, especially when your goal is to redirect traffic our way? This would add even more traffic to our residential neighborhoods while also making our homes less safe by putting them closer to the road. While I cannot speak knowledgeably about the need to update our utilities' infrastructure, I also do not think anyone would be here tonight if that was all you were proposing to do. I also think that regrading and resurfacing a road at the same time as updating utilities is great planning, but I don't appreciate including additional items that, in order to expediate and further the city's agenda. Keeping our infrastructure up to date and our roads in good condition are things we expect. Adding additional features that encroach upon our properties like sidewalks and providing avenues that actively increase traffic while reducing our ability to create barriers is not.
Hey, you've reached four minutes.
Sorry.
Do you have, how much more do you have?
It's fine, I can come back. Thanks.
Thank you.
Hi, my name's Bob Beck. I live at 10 Woodside Drive in Mount Vernon. Being last, everything's been covered, but it just comes down to, why Woodside Drive? Why now? And, and really, what's the work? What's the scope of the job? I mean, everything I've ever done in my life, you have, you have a plan, you lay it out, you, I mean, it just seems so odd that we could get where we are today with, like someone said, a handwritten sketch and a crayon. But, you know, we turn around and we say, "The city, if we're asking for money and we're getting grants, why don't we take our $2 million or $3 million and try to fix the dyke instead of fixing something that, you know, it seems like it's not a problem?" It's, if a pipe's broken or needs replaced, like we said, we believe, it's our responsibility, we'll fix our utilities. But to, it's how this come about? Because it's not Phase 1 and Phase 2. Somebody wants a thoroughfare from 229 to 36. That is the bottom line, that's the big picture, and that's what everyone wants. And so, yeah, you ask for some money, you're trying to get some- And so, yeah, you ask for some money, you're, you're trying to get some sidewalks, but bottom line is, we've done two studies we paid for. Can Coshockton Road handle another artery? Can it handle another light, another stop sign? Because right there at East Gate, you wait seven minutes for two cars to get out, and while those two cars are getting out, traffic is back clear up there to, you know, the Kroger gas station. The lights don't help flow of traffic and having another exit right there. It, it, it doesn't make sense to have more lights, more traffic trying to come in when, you know, our, our, Coshockton Road is just already overloaded. Most people sit there, and it's like a parking lot as far as you can see. So, you know, I'm just wondering, you know, so we have the, this project. I don't believe it should be declared an emergency because the citizens, you know, there's no, no proof of any immediate, major utilities aren't going to fail. The neighborhood has been there for decades. There's no new buildings, no parking lots. So, so why is there more water running off now that has to be taken care of than there ever was before? That you just really shouldn't say this is an emergency because, like someone said, it's taking away our right because if, if this should pass, even though you're only talking half a project that's not outlined, that I think that the majority of people realize that, that that's wrong on so many levels. So, um, yeah, I ended up rambling and jumping around, but that, that's the bottom line is, you know, that you need, as a group, as a department, you know, show us your plans, but, you know, prove with these studies that it's really going, if you want to relieve traffic, don't, it's going to make it worse. That having semis going through residential areas, that is never a good combination. Trying to get out on Coshockton Road from, from one of those little side streaks, it, it doesn't work out well. And so, maybe it's to step back and think about the bypass or the other, the other options that people have looked at in years past to really, you know, alleviate the problem. If you're going to have that fire department on Upper Gilcrest, you come across, that would be great to have a straight shot from Gilcrest over to 229. You can cover Gambier like you're, you're getting paid to do. It, thank you. But please, please, get some real documentation before you ever make a decision and take off the.
Anyone else on this side?
Good evening. My name's Charles Albert. I live at 1,000 New Gambier Road and is, I have to agree with everything that's being said here tonight, but I want to take that a little farther. This bypass, everybody talks about it going between 36 and 229. We know it's going to be farther than that. It's going to go down South Edgewood. It's going to go down past the bike trail. It's going to go down past, past the ballparks. It's going to go past the soccer fields. We're going to have such a big increase in traffic, and are we going to allow truck traffic? Now, I mean, you see people crossing the bike trail with the, even with the crosswalk signs and everything else, the problems there are. Is that going to increase more safety issues down by the ballparks? All the kids in the summer, all the people running around, and we're going to have an increase because it doesn't just stop at 229. It goes all the way down to 13. It goes all the way down to 661. This is a total bypass around, around the city. I really didn't plan on getting up here talking tonight, but boy, it just goes farther than 36 and 229, and, and people need to think about that safety. Thank you.
Anybody else on this side? Or over there? Or, sir, are you ready? We skipped you earlier. Let's go here and then we'll go to you, okay?
Thanks, Bruce.
Thank you.
My name is Bruce Malik. I live at 25 Dixie Drive, Mount Vernon. The package I handed you was actually prepared in conjunction with a PowerPoint presentation that I intended to do, but I found out that that can't be done here. So I would urge you and ask you to look through it, and it would complement my comments. I want to thank City Council for holding this public hearing. Words have meaning. At a Utility Commission hearing on June 1st back in 2021, while discussing concerns about utilities on Edgewood Road, City Engineer Brian Ball said the city would look, like to look at traffic calming and other improvements if a mutual agreement can be reached with the residents. That was a promise made. On August 24th, there was articles in Knox Pages concerning the Department of Transportation funding $2 million to help cover the cost of improving Edgewood Road between East High Street and Gambier Road. Safety Service Director Tanner Saliers was quoted in those articles that some improvements will be determined through further design and discussion with property owners. Another promise made. A final promise made is included in the capital project fact sheet prepared by Mr. Saliers. He states, "Public involvement and participation is critical in both phases of the project and will be sought consistently throughout the process." Well, we're well along the way, apparently. Phase 1 appears to have been planned, and there has not been any opportunity for the public or the residents of Edgewood to be heard until today. So to that extent, the promises made have become promises broken. Examining the capital project sheet prepared for this public hearing, Phase 1 is referred to as a construction project, while Phase 2 is a planning and design project. Clearly, they are different. The suggestion is that Phase 1 planning is complete and that planning for Phase 2 is not. Again, if that's the case, then public input that was so critical and promised never took place. But with regard to Phase 2, if the planning is not done, then at least at this point, this resolution is woefully premature unless City Council is willing to buy the proverbial pig in a poke. I can't imagine MVNU, the Department of Natural Resources, other government entities, or private businesses submitting or funding a project of this magnitude with so little information and without input from, discussion with, and consideration of the impact of the affected parties, the residents and the public. The capital project fact sheet and the resolution, and the resolution itself refer to Edgewood Road improvements from High Street to State Route 36, Coshockton Avenue. In Knox Pages, the Knox Pages articles that I just referenced on August 24th, 2023, City Engineer Brian Ball reportedly said that ultimately, the thought is to route traffic from Coshockton Avenue to Ohio 229 via Upper Gilcrest and Ohio Eastern Star Roads. Neither Mayor Starr nor the Safety Service Director corrected the city engineer's comments. What has changed since August 24th of 2023, a mere six months ago? It appears that funding resulting from this resolution will be used to plan the extension of and extend Edgewood Road to Coshockton Avenue. If that is the case, how will that be done? What will it look like? What will the impact be, both in terms of traffic and on the Edgewood and neighboring residents, their quality of life and property values? What happened to the Upper Gilcrest connector? At least a concept drawing was prepared for that project, which is more than was prepared for this project.
And that's four minutes. So you want to see if anybody else wants to talk, and then we'll circle my ground?
Yes, there was a young lady in the back. Let's do that and come back up.
What's that? Yeah, I'll sit down and, and, thank you.
Hi, I'm Emily Woods. I am the person living at 943 East High Street with my husband. As the house that is probably closest to all of these things proposed, we would just like some transparency because I don't think you can get six to eight feet on the side of the road without being in my house. So that's just kind of like a big thing that we're concerned about right now. And yes, I know Edgewood needs work. Like, we are the ones pushing people up the road in the winter when their cars break down. Like, we've pushed multiple people up so far this year. And so we know there's lots of things that can be improved upon, but, you know, we would just like transparency in general because we just, you know, we didn't think that was what we were getting into when we moved here, is our house potentially being taken from us because I don't think there's any land to give there. And, you know, our house was built in 1908. It was built by the old city engineer. The bricks on our house are Mount Vernon City Street bricks. So like, you know, it's kind of historic. So that's all I really wanted to say, but, yeah, we're, we're the, we're the problem right now is the 943 East High.
Anyone else want to speak? Yes, sir.
My name is, my name is Clyde Carl. I've lived at 6 South Edgewood Road for the last 30 years. My grandfather built the house right at the end of High Street back before there was a High Street, and my father grew up in the neighborhood and so forth, and I've known all these people. I don't, I, I was late today because I thought I was at 7:00, and I looked at my notes. So I'm really not particularly prepared in all submissions in writing, but I, I could walk through a whole series of anecdotes that are just really fun, like how do you turn right from going up East High Street Hill and turning onto Edgewood without taking out the phone pole, which has been done before? And, uh, and as for the gas line, those who go up and down that area between High Street and 229 know that my gas line was replaced about two years ago. They probably had about, at any given time during the day, 20, 26 people and half a dozen heavy, pieces of heavy equipment. And when they pulled the line out, the black line, the main black line going down there, you could put your finger in it. That's how big the hole was, so they had to do that. So in terms of replacing the gas line, that's got to be done. Right now, Edgewood is very dangerous because it's so narrow. So for example, on my side, all right, so 6 South Edgewood's where Vine Street dead ends, okay? People were going off the road all the time, and if you look at the mailbox, you'll notice it's sort of leaning. That's because it's a rubber mailbox, and it's been taken out a number of times, okay? It's not leaning because it, we're negligent, it's because it gets taken out and then put back up sometime, usually by the people who took it out to begin with. You know, and you come back and you're like, something's different about that mailbox today. And, and a couple of years ago, like two years ago, a guy goes off the road into the ditch, which has no berm, got stuck, pulled hard, and ends up going over and goes through John and Tanya Noonan's front window. How he missed the fire hydrant, I don't know, but he did, you know? And, and it's because Edgewood has a 40-foot right-of-way, which is very narrow, but it's not being used as it is. And why there's a ditch there, I don't know. Now, as for what we're talking about the High Street interchange, or intersection, I have no idea how you're going to get through there. You're just going to have to rip down a couple houses because that's the only way you're going to widen that area. Those were put in long before there was even a High Street in there. High Street wasn't put through till 1920. Okay, now, I had somewhere, there are Dalton Dalton Report from the early 60s. I was on my first city planning committee back in 1969, and we had the Dalton and Dalton Report, and a Burgess and Niple Report, and every one of them takes Mount Vernon Avenue, curls up around the area. And Gene Grant owned all that land at one point and was going to give it to the city outright. He would love to have had a road through there. And apparently, in 1980, Harold Johnson said, "Well, if we had $6 million, we could do it." Well, you know, that $6 million would have solved all our problems today. But right now, right now, Coshockton Avenue is such a disaster. If you punch through Coshockton Avenue, you're not going to help anything. And meanwhile, you're going to have to widen, not widen, but just complete the edges of Edgewood Road from High Street to 229, just to make it usable. I don't know what you're going to do once you go north of High Street.
That's four minutes.
All right.
If we can have another.
Anyway, um, I'll make more comments in writing. Thanks.
So, Mr. Boren, do we have other people waiting downstairs?
No, we're good.
Okay. I know Mr. Malek wanted to have, have a few, a little bit more time. Was there anybody else that needed a little bit more time? Okay, you're a new speaker. Okay, let's, 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 let's have you speak first, sir. State your. You just came in, so you get up to four minutes and state your name and address for us, please.
I will try to make it brief. I'm Michael Smith. I live at 210 South Edgewood. Been there for 40 years, this August, coming August. Just want to share my thoughts on the Edgewood Road project. Sidewalks, new gas and water lines, storm drains, bring it on. That would benefit everyone. Increased traffic volume and speed, who will that benefit? It won't fix our problem. We're still going to have high volume of traffic, and if you're like me, as a driver, we're like water. We seek the path of least resistance. I live on Edgewood Road, and I've found many ways to get through there, but because of resistance, like five or six stop signs, I used to go all the way to Marida to get out onto Coshockton Avenue. I began by turning left, picking up, I can't remember the name of it, East something, but goes out to the intersection of Coshockton. It was difficult over the 40 years I've been here. The first 10 years were difficult just to get onto Coshockton, even after the light was put there. It was difficult because it seemed like you had to wait forever to get through that because all the traffic, they'd give you the green light. So I decided to stop turning left on Marida and start turning right, go down to Vern Dale, turn left, eh, at least I skipped the light, right? Well, I started counting stop signs, and I thought, what am I doing going all the way down Edgewood? Why don't I turn on East Chestnut? Go up the hill, go down Vern Dale. Gets me to the same place, three less stop signs. Then I realized, after probably 20 years, that it was tough sometimes to get onto Vern Dale. So, and, you know, who wants to go down to the light at Kroger and wait for that one? So I started going up New Gambier, down Terrell Drive, and, you know, I thought that was pretty good, until the shopping got really crazy about 10 years ago. And then I realized that if I was going to go to Walmart, Aldi, or Rural King, I'd take 229 to Eastern Star to New Gambier. 229 to Eastern Star, to New Gambier, to Upper Gilcrest, and it was quicker. But it wasn't helpful the previous 30 years, what I was doing to people in my neighborhood. And the reason that I know that increasing volume of traffic increases speed, I drive 25. It's my neighborhood. I believe in driving 25. But I can tell you that in the last 10 years, the number of cars that eat my bumper have increased multiple times. What a thorough street will do to Edgewood is, I guarantee, it's going to raise the speed of people traveling, not necessarily the speed limit. Now, the city hasn't talked to us at all about whether there are going to be stop signs on Edgewood or is it going to go through.
That's four minutes, so.
Okay. So I guess what I'm trying to say is, you can't stop traffic and speed unless you do a bypass like was done at Fredricktown. That works. It's too late for cul-de-sacs. That also does work. But in my neighborhood, it's too late for that. So I urge you not to accept any plan for adding traffic to Edgewood Road.
Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Maylich? Who else? Anybody else needed more time? Okay, you can get up to four more minutes?
Okay.
Okay? Mr. Maylich? Oh, Mr. Maylich, yeah, go ahead.
I almost got it down to four minutes. My final comment had been that if we're going to extend, or if the plan is to extend Edgewood Road to US 36, what's it going to look like? How's it going to affect the people? What opportunities have they had to be heard? They've been heard tonight, I hope. All I wanted to add to that was, the people in this room, including in the council and the public, have the right to know the answers to the questions that have been posed here this evening. From traffic studies, where are they, to drawings, where are they, to data that supports that this is even needed. They have a right to know. And because at least at this point, we don't know, I simply ask you respectfully to reject and to not pass Resolution 2024-23. Thank you.
I'll wait till the drawings or the photographs are around before I start. But, and unfortunately for the public, I had had a flash drive and was told at 2:30 this afternoon I couldn't use it because of risk of a virus. So fortunately, Mr. Hill made pictures for me that I got to him at a very late time in the afternoon, and I had hoped for the public to see them, since they all know about Edgewood Road, maybe they already know what these look like. First off, if you go to picture number one, and I'm going to refer to the red line on the drawing that was part of Tanner Sawyer's presentation to the public. And before I talk about the red line, as an engineer, I measured it and it's about three and a half feet wide, so I don't know where the red line goes on these pictures, I can only guess. But if you look at picture number one, that's at the, almost at 229 on the west side of the street, and I believe the red line is going to come across between that bush and the sidewalk, somewhere in the middle, right there. And if you look, the next house on the left on that same picture, their porch is closer yet, and the red line would probably be about a foot east of the shrubbery. If you look at picture number two, we're looking at the house, I realize this is part of phase two, but it was in the drawing, and that is the house on the northwest corner of East High Street and Edgewood Road. And as you can see, that shrubbery there is covering stair steps up into the side of the house. And as you can see by the photograph, the edges of those stair steps are about two feet from the pavement right now. I have a lot of room to put, widen, or do anything. Even a curb won't fit. Picture number three is the house across the street on East High Street, and the red line goes right up to the garage door for that house. The next picture is Mike's house down on the other end. It's the first house going up the hill on the right from 229, actually second house, and the red line, whatever it means, I don't know, but it chops off the corner of his house. And on the other side of the street, the red line, if you take a look at that big pine tree, the red line is right about through the middle of that big pine tree. We're back down to the house where the garage is right, and people coming down New Gambier Road in the wintertime have slid into it before, but that's the house where the red line is right at the garage door. And then the next picture shows you looking south at Mike's house again, and you can see how close his house is to the street. And I know we have, I've heard from Brian that he's going to straighten the street, but based on all of the properties on both sides of the street, in my opinion, as an engineer, he's going to have to make the street curve more, not less. And then this last picture, the next picture is at East Vine Street on the corner, which would be the northwest corner, and the red line would be just a little bit slightly west of that fence on the left-hand side of that power meter, that electrical power And the last picture is on the northeast corner of East High Street, Mr. White's old house that divides East High Street and New Gambier Road. And if you take a look at that election sign across the street, the red line goes roughly right through that sign, that election sign for Mr. Reese or whatever it is. So you can see extending it further south, how high up on East High, on New Gambier Road it is. So I just wanted to show you, for those who maybe don't know what East, what Edgewood Road looks like, I agree that I don't have a problem with putting in curbs. I don't have a problem with what I've heard widening the street to 20 feet wide because most places it's 19 now, another foot's not a big deal. A curb, an individual curb takes a foot and a half. And if you put sidewalks in on one side of the street and you have a green space between the curb and the sidewalk, and you have a sidewalk that's at least in the neighborhood of four or five feet wide to make it safe enough to walk on, and when I met with Brian Ball three or four years ago and he gave me the details, he needs a whole 40 feet of right-of-way to actually implement that, even if he only puts on sidewalk on one side. So, thanks.
Sure. Come on up.
Hi. So I am the husband at 943 East High Street. I'm Arturo Faustino, and I'd just like to piggyback off what the lovely gentleman pointed out, is that our house is actually six to eight feet away from the road. We have the lovely pleasure of hearing people's music sometimes. So it's fairly close. Going forward, we have actually invested a lot of money into the house. I think we're about 50 to 60 grand in, just doing updates, putting more noise-canceling windows, stuff like that, because we like the home. It's over 100 years old, it has, while it's not a historic home, it has a lot of history, and we are trying to preserve that and make it a home for the future and our kids. We are in a great location, and we plan on staying there for the long run, actually, with the money we're investing. We had planned to do concrete this summer, apparently not happening anymore, possibly. Going forward with the transparency is that we have no clue what might happen. All we know is that our home is directly in your way, no matter what. There is no ifs or buts, it's right there. I don't know if you guys have taken that into consideration. Is there money for that? You know, the last thing we need to find out is that our home is getting taken away from us no matter what, considering the money we've invested and just to find that out last minute, would kind of suck. I think a lot of people would be upset and probably rally behind us and actually, you know, doing something about it, which is the last thing you guys need, is, you know, a mob coming up to City Hall finding out that you guys have taken homes from people for no reason, well, without any, any money. I think, I think it's just the lack of information that we have, especially with homes that are directly impacted, we're not just lightly impacted, it's a direct impact on our home. It would be nice to have a little bit more information on what that plan is. We understand that there's changes and updates that need to be made, but I still think there's a lack of information that's there. And that's really it. I mean, you know, it's, have you guys really thought about the impact that it's going to do to the homes you actually have to tear down? And just, you know, again, we just ask for a little bit more transparency and communication. That's all. Thank you.
Is there anyone else who wants to speak? Yes, gentlemen. That's fine. Yes, yes. What was your last name again?
Showman, S-H-O-M-A-N. That's not the right one. All right, so what I can see from driving down South Edgewood is more than one property owner has taken measures to create some kind of barrier between Edgewood and their homes. Properties have trees, bushes, and fences, all put in place for privacy and to provide natural barriers between traffic and the inherent traffic noises that come with living near a busy street. This proposal not only increases these issues for owners, but it also appears to be taking away the land provided, that provides these buffers. While Mr. Ball has stated that this project includes vegetative barriers to help separate between the road and homes, one, there doesn't appear to be enough land, and two, no real details about these, this is provided either. If we look at what the city has done in the past, this typically takes the form of planting small trees that, one, don't really provide a barrier, and two, are problematic in the long term as the root systems can become destructive, affecting the utilities that you just put in, the sidewalks that you want to put in, and even the home foundations if they're that close, which is kind of like the land that we're looking at. Increased traffic and reduced yard space also equals a less safe environment for families with children. The value of our properties will decrease as the neighborhoods and homes become less desirable, while our liability increases with the additional sidewalks. With the lack of transparency and planning details to what phase one, let alone phase two, really means for our neighborhood, we request that this proposal not be passed. We hope that you look to our beautiful and well-maintained bike path as the best options for bikers and walkers, instead of spending large amounts on new sidewalks with steep inclines that encroach upon our homes. We hope that you will continue to look at other, better ways to reduce traffic congestion, one that doesn't adversely affect our established residential neighborhoods. This project has continuously been voted down in the past for a reason. It's not the best solution for our town. Thank you.
I spoke with Sam Miller a few years back about the impact on the...
No. That's not how you...
About the impact that Edgewood Road would have on the property values. 35%, 30 to 35% loss of value if Edgewood Road is put through as a thorough street.
Is there anyone else who wishes to speak? Sure.
I just want to say, I don't blame this council for the problems. The problems have existed long before you were on the council. It's the fault of your predecessors who didn't take action when they needed to, and they proposed actions that were opposed by too many people. That's where you find yourself. I hope that you will choose. A bypass is needed, there's no question about it. We need to get the traffic out of our residential areas and get them out there in the fields. It can be done. I know that the most likely property is not within the city, but it can be done if government officials will do what's right.
Speak now and forever hold your peace. Until the next meeting. All right, thank you for coming tonight, we appreciate it, and...
Yeah, I too want to thank everybody. This is not the funnest way to spend your evening, but we do appreciate you coming out and speaking to council. If I could have a motion to adjourn.
So move.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
We are adjourned.